I would like to ask Vice President Mariur, Floor Leader Aldabel, and all the senators to adjourn on day 16 for the second regular session. Mr. President.
Senator Regis Agitaya. Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo. Senator Jonathan Choysal. Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte. Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw. Senator Mark Erbelau Rudim. Senator Umi Sangabau. Senator Kazuki El Tapsungino. Senator Andrew Tabelwal. Senator Mason Gireevangal Whipps. Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel. Vice President Karai Mariur. President Hockons Paulas. Mr. President Tania Kurum.
Mr. Kurum, you have been very generous with the day ahead of us. You have been very generous with Senator Agitaya and Senator Gireevangal, excused for the day. We will adjourn from the floor leader and Senator Aldabel. We will adjourn from the floor leader.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with Vice President Mariur, senators, and the president for the day. And we will adjourn from the first reading. We will be very generous with the other members of the House for the day. And we will be very generous with the agenda for the day. But we will adjourn from the agenda and we will adjourn from the order of business and from the morning's bill calendar. First reading, move the pass for the House Bill 11-21-1 SHT2.
The motion is number 2 and the clear.
House Bill Number 11-21-1 SHT2, a bill for an act to amend Title 12 of the Palau National Code to modernize and update the Corporation's Law of the Republic of Palau and for other related purposes. The House will approve Title 12 of Palau National Code and will modernize and update the La Ula Corporation of Palau. The House will approve it as speakers by request.
The Corporation law is that the president of the House has been in both houses. And he has been reluctant to discuss the House. And the House has been very generous with the agenda, but we will adjourn from the Senate.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the other members of the House for the other members of the House to initiate the initiative and to adjourn from the floor leader. And we will adjourn from the House bill for the first reading and to adjourn from the House. We will be very generous with the House for the House to discuss the leadership and to adjourn from the House to approve the La Ula Corporation of Palau. While the most important thing is to approve the La Ula Corporation of Palau next step to economic development. So we will adjourn from the House and to approve the La Ula. We will adjourn from the House.
Senator Isal.
We have been very generous with the House. 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 We have been very generous with the
Senator Isal. Do you agree? We have been very generous with the House and to approve the La Ula. We will adjourn from the House. The senior chairman of the La Ula Corporation, Rudim, has been very generous with the House for the executive meeting. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We will adjourn from the House. We will adjourn from the House. We will adjourn from the House. We will be very generous with the House.
We will be very generous with the House. We will adjourn from the House and from the House. We will adjourn from the House. Move the pass for the House and final reading, Senate Bill 11-13 SHT1.
The motion is number 2 and the clear. Senator Isal. The House will approve it. SHT1. We have been very generous with the House. 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 We will adjourn from the House. We will adjourn from the House. We will adjourn from the House.
Senate Bill Number 11-13 SHT1, a bill for an act to amend Chapter 5 under Title 28 of the Palau National Code by adding a new subchapter 3 to be known as the Boat Owners Association for Tourism Act, which creates the Boat Owners Association for Tourism and establishes the membership, management, and powers of this new association and for other related purposes. The House will approve Chapter 5, Title 28, PNC, and will approve the subchapter 3 of the Boat Owners Association for Tourism Act. And will approve the Management of Palau. We will approve it. The Senate Bill Number 11-13, as speakers. As Senator Umi Sangabau, Senator Andrew Tabelwal, Senator Kazuki El Tapsungino, Senator Mark Erbelau Rudim, Senator Mason Gireevangal Whipps, Senate Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel, Senator Jonathan Choysal, Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte, Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo, Senate Vice President Karai Mariur, Senate President Hockons Paulas, Senator Regis Agitaya, and Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Senator Cuarte.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with Senator Isal. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the Chairman Sangabau. We will be very generous with the House. 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 We will be very generous with the House.
Senator Sangabau.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. Senator Cuarte, we have been very generous with the House. 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 While we have been very generous with the House, we will be very generous with the House. And we have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. Of course, there are tour companies who are very generous with the House. But they are very generous with the House. They are very generous with the House. But they are very generous with the House. They are very generous with the House. They are available to use. So Senator Cuarte, we have been very generous with the House. Mr. President.
Mr. President Sangabau, Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. 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 We have been very generous with the tourism industry. But, Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. 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 Mr. President Sangabau.
Senator Sangabau.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. Mr. President, we have been very generous with the Bureau of Tourism and the Division of Compliance. And I understand that at the time we already had a citation for the year. And we have registered it under which is written the Bureau of Tourism. Not only registered it, but we have registered it in hotels that are tourism facilities. We have registered it. And we have registered the Bureau of Tourism under the Bureau of Tourism. So we have issued a citation for the year. I believe a first offense was $500. Second offense was $1000. And third offense was $2000. So, Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House.
Senator Isal.
We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have issued the bill, the SHT1 version, the line 3 and the line 6. The House of Tourism Amendment. The Bureau of Tourism Division of Compliance shall be responsible for enforcing the penalty provision of this section and issue fines for violation. And we will appeal enforcement upon action pursuant to this section shall be covered by Administrative Act Title 6. And we will be very generous with the House. We will be very generous with the House. We will be very generous with the Regulation of Title 66. So we will approve it. We will issue a penalty. We will issue a penalty. Mr. President.
We have been very generous with the House. Chairman Sangabau, the last thing is that tourists may not be treated like this. It's like a family guest. But we have friends in the house. But we are tourists. And we are tourists. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We are tourists. And we are tourists. And we will be very generous with the Association. What do you think?
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. Of course, friends are tourists. And we have to travel. But we have to travel. We have to exempt them. So, Mr. President, we will adjourn from the House. We will not be very generous with the House. We will 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 approve the necessary regulations and clarify them.
Okay, Mr. President. Do you agree? We have been very generous with the House.
Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo. Senator Jonathan Choysal. Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte. Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw. Senator Mark Erbelau Rudim. Senator Umi Sangabau. Senator Kazuki El Tapsungino. Senator Andrew Tabelwal. Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel. Vice President Karai Mariur. President Hockons Paulas. Mr. President, I say 11 yes and 11 no.
I say 11 yes and 11 no. The Senate Bill 11-13 SHT1, the Order of the Business for Tourism Act, will be approved on 11 yes and 11 no. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, the next bill is the first reading. Move the pass for the House and final reading, House Bill 11-25-2 SHT2 SHT1. And we will adjourn from the House. We have technical corrections. We have 22 technical corrections. We will adjourn from the House. We will adjourn from the House.
We will say. Discussion. Senator Aldabel.
Mr. President. The La Ula discussed the second committee report. And in the second reading, we have been very generous with the House. 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 And we will be very generous with the House. We will be very generous with the House. Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. We will be very generous with the House. We will be very generous with the House. We will be very generous with the House. And we will be very generous with the House. 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 We will approve the House. We will approve the House. We will approve the House. There is a question that the chairman has issued. The floor amendment will approve the La Ula project. We will approve the grant and approve the COVID-19. And we have mentioned that the typhoon was occurring. And we will approve the House. The House will approve the House. We 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 will approve the House.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. 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 Of course, we have the last night of the typhoon. But we have approved the vote. Eventually, we will approve the vote. We will approve the vote. We will tell the language specifically. We will approve the outside grant of Palau received in FY 2021 for preventing, containing, responding, or mitigating the effects of coronavirus pandemic. Do you agree? We will approve the vote. We will approve the vote. One million in Taiwan. We will approve eighty billion. The news will say eighteen point nine million. Something. But, Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. Perhaps we will approve the vote. We will issue the vote of Tabelwal, the vice president of the Senate, Sangabau, in the coming days. But we have the concern of the House. We will approve the House as a result of this typhoon. We will follow up on that. Mr. President.
Senator Mariur.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the technical corrections. We have issued the vote. We have been very generous with the number seven. We have been very generous with the technical. We have been very generous with the vote. We have been very generous with the number seven. We have been very generous with the vote. We have been very generous with the vote. We have been very generous with the vote. The Ministry of Justice will approve the number 929, page 2.
Short recess. We will adjourn from the House. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, the motion is approved for the final reading, House Bill 11-25-2 SHT2 SHT1. We will approve the technical corrections for the House. For the Senate.
We will adjourn from the House. We will adjourn from the House. Senator Mariur.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have proposed the House. We have proposed the House. We have been very generous with 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 the House. And we have been very generous with the House. 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 And we have been very generous with the House. 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 And we have been very generous with the House. 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 But we have been very generous with the House. 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 We have been very generous with the House.
Mr. President, Senator Mariur, Senator Sangabau.
Mr. President, we have been very generous with the House. 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 And we have been very generous with the House. 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 But we have been very generous with the House. 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 His Excellency, Sir Ralph Whipps Jr., has been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. Mr. President.
Mr. President, Senator Sangabau, we have been very generous with the House. We have been very generous with the House. We will say.
Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo. Senator Jonathan Choysal. Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte. Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw. Senator Mark Erbelau Rudim. Senator Umi Sangabau. Senator Kazuki El Tapsungino. Senator Andrew Tabelwal. Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel. Vice President Karai Mariur. President Hockons Paulas. Mr. President, I say 11 yes and 11 no.
The La Ula, the House Bill 11-25-2
Tialuldasul molla al ngia House Bill 11 dash 25 dash 2, H2 S1, amlam nga ra onge de u lobong lomngi ora Senate, el eleven yes, ede ano. Floor Leader.
President sel mamulbomal bill na the reading. Makmubal na pasara the reading final reading, House Bill 11 dash 20, dash 1S. Don tira, klera miwa title.
Klera miwa title.
House Bill number 11 dash 20 dash 1S, a bill for an act to amend Title IV of the Palau National Code to allow justices of the Palau Supreme Court to fully perform their judicial duties and for other related purposes. Tialuldasul molla amalod ra Title IV of Palau National Code, el mu konge ma justices ra Palau Supreme Court, amo mooy ul maru langar alir magukbe birangot al belgol. Tialuldasul molla alul darsi ya President Rabulbelaw surangal S. Reeves Jr.
Si da ta itonamui me gul ngite don tira Senator Isan dilutin mo smoditean mo talgivel mo takli. Ebu Tassen Kyu, Senator Isan.
Mr. President, al olon filatiklaaz, lo reha tiyim.
Namalimitian agotol on tira Chief Justice el mora President, Reeves Jr., His Excellency, emer goy emne, dan ya on tira President el mergau, ma kixentra, biro, House o delegates lasi member ito dujutian. Lo giu segi del amendment ra kan kan, sel Kelsikte Advelaw ra November 2008, lo, ngo diya tritalela, Apalit Court Rabulbelaw, Federal Division, the Supreme Court Rabulbelaw. Meda altai me, yalla ahmal dakklwa se, tigel apointi ra President, el justice, espedias justice, kera outside Rabelaw. Tigel dol tira klala el altai, yalla ahmulwa se, in no case may any individual selected as a temporary or part-time basis issue any writ, order, ruling, or other proceedings act while absent from the Republic. Mugul yalla atigel special justice ra apointi ya President kera outside Rabelaw, ay issue a writ, order, ma ngiril togoi, el giril agort Rabelaw, el digal outside Rabelaw. Ngiril merbelaw emodong okra agort rum rabelaw, e orriya saikal togoi, issue a decision eti, ma order eti. Namle on tira Chief Justice because of the amendment to the 14, 14 amendment constitution, na kasi meda li, bosu itigel part-time justice, el din arrikl, because ite na experiencing iti past one year tial COVID, nde kasi il merbelaw, orriya saikal geis. Nde la ngar se, el voltura technology, zoom, whatever, emer goe, el godu ra, adra agort Rabulbelaw, attorney, ma whoever, edi spili ngalakwam, tanga ra saibal, tanga ra amirigel, issue a writ, maluven order, maluven decision eti. Simple es ta, yalla adi al bestiat te ala sidut, segi del. Ela ha in essence se, sel bo niya COVID, en abtokel case samdeel. Ben, al justice ngatian a arbit, vitus demsel, tlanganiya kan freak, tiri lospe al justice kera outside. Edi kasi, imen nde kasi skogi, nde kala moreng sageis ra adra Rabelaw. Mu ru li, musu il din arsel roid, idekre Rabelaw, el voltura technology, eh hira argument, ma, what have you, maluven dibabier, edi, arrikl emer goe issue, arsum ta asan ngi ma regenitel, eh issue a writ, maluven decision, maluven order ki ra agort. Simple segi de on tira Chief Justice, ngo ra klaboga la mira klu, ngia asel mira hiringe. El nganiya bladerlin sola House, sola Senate, sola President, ma sola Chief Justice. Sula. Sula eh Senator Isal, sum digang oi, klera ma rolko, ma Tassen Kyu.
Senator Rubay Kikubuo Inavo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Oi.
Senator Mark Webalaw Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangao.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Tap Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Doublewal.
Oi.
Royal Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Kray Mayur.
Oi.
President Jokons Paulas.
Oi.
Mr. President Tassen Kyu, eleven yes, ede ano.
Tere, celuldasul molla, el House Bill 11 dash 20, dash 1S, emlam nga ra, au lobong lomngi de lomngi be ra Senate, eleven yes, ede ano, eti asela al giril al justice ra Supreme Court. Floor Leader.
President, abradal molme, aningiselt ra urere del, digal ngana tial atendargi dem namo kultmokel, meraulaol ma, ul ngitek, kliya motion el, suspend arul se, bo se, adapleset tial communication 11 dash story ra appropriate parta kalender. Komeng, digal report, Standing Committee Report, 11 dash story.
Si da motion namdung esegna, tigel roguil gongendu oi.
Oi.
Om tok, namai, floor leader.
Segi de President, na plays ra kalender, ma, el altai ek, mugund adaptra Senate Standing Committee Report 11 dash story.
Si da motion namdung esegna, buguntira chairman na committee, bo biske da report. Senator Rudim.
Oi. Malimintutam, Mr. President, tial Senate Standing Committee Report number 11 dash story, amosawadra Senate Resolution number 11 dash 28, eti anga introduceregi, Mr. President, April 20. Et tiya Senate Resolution namo, a proposal mo confirm a presidential appointment tra Mr. Lubu Litler el mo administrator of Palau National Aviation Administration for a term of five years. Mr. President, a committee gamnosebel, lo durokla ager, lomlangan namani, nosabel u ngobe public hearing ra April 27. Ma, committee gamnosebugeni, Mr. President, kmo se, a Mr. Litler, atilov de la school ra Guam Advantist Academy, ra 1988, emila molma mangua bachelor's degree ngi ra, economics, ra Bowling Green State University. Ya, Mr. Litler, Mr. President, aderek olaba multiple licenses ra aviation, nganga licensed pilot, license ra SIC First Officer Ratings, ma PIC Captain Ratings, certified flight instructor, ngaderek certified flight instructor, ma airplane multi-engine license, ma FAL Airline Transporter Pilot ATP. Mr. President, mka se, ra toga la school, de u lomuora career ngi, emo, moktagen 15 years of professional pilot experience. Ngao lomuora urra air Guam, ra pilot ra turbo prop short 360, ra 204, mo 207, ya 207, mo 208, nderek mnejet pilot for Express Jet Airlines, na Continental Express. Nde rekam ne serve as a Boeing Business Jet, Global Express, ma kowshrim jet pilot for aviation concepts income, up until November 2012. Ngage, Mr. President, became a Boeing Business Jet pilot for the, the Jet Edge International, until November 2016. El altai ma Mr. Litler is a self-employed private contractor of Boeing Business, as a Boeing Business Jet pilot, eda si siltai, nganga direklo secretary, treasurer ra, eril estate ra, akumbalitira U Corp. Mr. President, a committee gamnosebugeni April 27, motmsawal members na committee, ma, our members in the joint hearing, ma, a committee bugtiguina singanga ma le we clarify then, emorti al droal, tial epene, eh Mr. President is administrator, amekshirang regulate ra safety ra air travel, ma air transportation. Sele, kora, jukmita bangare, Mr. President, lasenganga madagariar u, ulmadangala ta tetel tial yurior, sera lulu gerilwa se, tiam wa ngara tetel, emulwa se, aigal tora airport, maluven air safety, ablo olu unma regulations ringa, quote ringa, Mr. President, kwa se, written in blood. Ngwana wal, malu si siltog, Mr. President, ndikmula se, ngo ra, aigal ulu la, atogala skogi, ma flight table oldu, ra sel sumunduwa agar reor, atogala aigid skogia, aigid industriya motmaga, e wutmokla ulu malisi, la toga safety. Malimde segi del phrase se, Mr. President, el dili ma, molmu tuselo gerin'i ra, atogala safety, emukmulwa se, adal pilot ta rabolngas, ingiril ogelwa, sen se, ulotigiraa, adalala na mal, maluven ngalgeran tarinima, ultrongalgerin, mosel skoging muli, kwa segi da kotor moklo, dolbe de, kara adala safety, la toga skogi. Nde rekam no assure arveka, adukmulwa se, aigal togra, a, skogi, asumuka travel, nderek mal statistically en safe, omamgal ramla, ramla ira glum. Mr. President, akti, so alu molmo segi de, eh yildel mora rogu members na committee, manitik Senator, sonu contribute na narselle hiring, ndi committee bugtiguina singa, aigalo mosada la togra urior, momsawadra wa aircraft registry, ma riven airline registry, emulu otia makmol, ol clavmodangir ngit tial industry. Ma, committee gamnosebuguina singa, a, a, a fields assured, lo singa ma qualify them, emodangir gal concepts, na tetel la airline industry, maluven aircraft transport industry. Sula, Mr. President, ta kil del mora takal Senator, for any comments. Sula, ya, ul ngita la support arveka, adala, namenishan ngalugbagi, Mr. President. Oh, Mr. President, komeng, a Mr. Lubu Litler, aderek la klotraol ra Rabulur orior, ngara, sela committee report, mnsaladra molu yirin, emlar ngia ager morin, komsawadangir, aigale, kan freak tring, ma krekil yildel mora, ngiril Senator, mosu ek, duk mugamenta tigel tia. Sula, Mr. President.
Sula Senator Rudim, Chairman, Maria Angud, Senator Mayur.
Vice President, akti regal, lomralwa se tial position, amkete talwal gora dingara acting, ngan gelu ngaraniya walwadim na acting, ndi nakagora, ah, amlam omlara kalnganiya acting. Et tegi diala, ko, mo talta altai, et tegi da kol badungwa, adal mora tian, dirigal sel hiring lobengel, kadiya nomtiguwa singa, nganiya klo, klawa dangir ngi ra togra aviation. Meng, gora diyo, tabuwa se, laltai, ndukora omukpeset tial airport trigid, ma nganiya ikalukpesel gora a public, private partnership, bil tira moru to tial airport, edo domdasu armo tokl, skogin merbelaw, lolta ra okia, meng dirigal giril nganiya, wa se, aigid, adal wal gora, omes ra se, safety ma, a security ra togra, a, aigal aigid skogin merabulbelaw, meng, tial ul ngita wa se, bolsebe del gongir ngal, lboi gung bol, ngut tial ngara, le bolsebe la, spilsebe la urior lobengera, aigal gukmo, eh, additional information, lolbi lasalmo, omar ngal, eh, rubak, eh bolsebe la gukmo godongol merolbi, ma, ul ngita arveka, damolsebe del support tial committee report, ma dobra, resolution eti ngirin. Sula.
Sula eh Senator Mayur, Senator Isal. Yak member na committee, lasabega mora hiring, etmasan atala urior de, Mr. President, ndi, ndi so al mulila, imut tokel giril na namani, akmalu debe kala wa se, amral nganiya, ngun mosela Rabulwal Belaw, emukonger tial appointment, re knowing him, ma, gudalba nganiya, he probably making lutin bo niya skogin, bulutin mo urior, bo niya, ul ngi la, lutin mo meraskogira, frequent way set, pera, pandemic, and this guy probably be making twice as much money, doing what he was doing as a pilot, than he would handish job as a director of Palau Aviation. Akmasashe, rubun merabulbelaw, rubun se orabulbelaw, ra togra aviation, emorti al droal, ma kmalmo support ra, a report, bo mengiul emorti al job. Sula. Sula Senator Isal, Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, ah, amalanga sulila Chairman Rudim ra hiring at el Alsils, ya, ngahmal silu babtoka, akti al dimlaksal, madangilwa se tial PNAE ngara uriler, akkora amnom dangilwa se, tia wayal gora FAA Rabulbelaw, kur onga ra, aigil safety ma regulations ra, arulela bekskogil, sel gora Rabulbelaw, ngadiri kal mal, lomensionar, wa se, ndiri kal lamogirat el regulator wa, drones, ma, aigil, any flying aircraft, el, el mo posta, a gora safety issues. Ah, Mr. President, ndiso kala se, akmal, llo, oh, sabega mo, mbanalia, a professionalism, ah, akti al mbanalia, a klotral, wa se, mal, eh, his, ah, ain sel integrity ringi, ma sel professionalism ringi, eh mal, eh, ku marang, wa se, mal morulia, u ngi lurior, kada, ah, amalanga sulila, gora, amnor ngit tial eh COVID-19, meng, la, digal salsebaskogim, ma ul meng, gora sabel el merbelaw, eh, eh, gada ngal tanat, el nosabe del, el nosabe el gongera appointment tra President, el mo surbert tial, al position, ma, akmal, lol ngita support, na mora, appointment tra, ah, Mr. Litler, el mora, mo director of PNAE. Sula eh, Mr. President.
Sula Senator Inavo, Senator Libayano.
President, akti, soal di, mo, amalanga sulila Chairman Ra, ama Rudim, man mosel gutmakli tial, malu ngi report eh, ede kalo, amalanga sulila, nosabel release, man eh, eh, u ngi hiring, lobengel ngal rubak, ra Eli. Ngakadimno, kadalaa committee, ding, nosela Chairman gongem, akno sit in, isel, el confirmation hearing. Nde rekam, kakwar arveka, adal, nde rekam, ma luto ak silu, bra, aigil, respond ngi, ma aigil questioner, ara, members na committee, ma, senators na narselle hiring. Akti, imlatke, klasengata ra, ah, ngalgel belaw, mal girel ad, ede rekam mal, lla, ah, ate na malu ngi qualification, atogala aviation, et tegi del position, administrator of PNAE, ah, waigal baldu Vice President, mga ta ta taral, al, 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 laga administrator ngi, ma gadiwa, ospera adal wal acting administrator, ndi, ngu ilan ngudel, klaseng namo, se edel matigera, adal qualify, mitigel requirement tra qualification, adal mo, morti adroal. Eh, mal, ngu ilan ngudel, rogo si, eh, Mr. President, ndigal ngar report, ding, soal di, notingil, klaseng, ngal, eh, naminiya mal, lemension ra, anklela buigun esad, el Jerome Almarui. El, ngong, ngwan ra, adra Belaw, ngalgel Belaw, direkamal, le inspire ngi, wal gora, mal le Roma adal ngi, ah, togra aviation. Mal, ngu ilan ngudel, rogo si, klaseng, nde rekam ngania, Rabulbelaw esad, direkam se il moro ma adal, aigal aigil togra, rua aviation. Eh, Mr. President, akti regal, mo, tiona arveka, ade, malal ngita support ra, ah, Senkyol, morgal, adal, mosabe el guk, ah, moriya, ah, adal mo fullta, ngarti al position. Sula.
Sula Senator Aldabel, Senator Mayur.
President, diwa di, additional information ra, segi da kibom, besa President, ndi rekam gora, amnariya, te lel, ndi rekam gora, minadur, ngal giril ngal bui, ngal, naminil wa se, ngwal gora mal, llo, ul ngit ringil wa se, member tegi del position, mo, administrator tial PNAE. Eh, ngwal gora, llo gonge, ndi mlar ngiya gora, ontil mora President, wa se, ngaga pilot. Eh, aigil nganiya, giril mentena, aigal guk hours, ma aigal guk, requirement tra being a pilot, meng, ngul ngit ringil wa se, ak mortiang, ndi, beskakati al, mesel guk lbo ngiati al, ekpok continue aigidel. El altai, me dingara online courses, sending wa se, sel bo niya skogin, fly lmo, mengiwa aigidel. Training, mal mol, mesel license ringil valid, meng. Segi dia, gora, additional information, edi rogo si, siltai, menga dirigal wal gora, amne, ngul, wa isel wa se, ndi rekam, mosabe la urior lobengedel. Lgutmakli, ah, Belaw, mosabe del, mal, lmagutpi, segi dele, tial eh, tegi dele, eh, eh registry. Segi del guk register aigal, skogil diwa tial ship registry. Meng, segi dia, dirigal, gora, taladil tal, wa se, ngasabel, mortiang, ndi rekam, mosuke de segi, btoka aigil gora blel, ol ofir, wa se, aigid akpon, sebe de, improve, aigil Rabulbelaw. Mal, amalanga sulila, ul ngita, motul ngita, tial gil ngal rubak.
Sula Senator Mayur, Senator Cuarte.
Sula eh President, ndiak member na committee, di karamle, le, soal momdit, morti al, ngal adal wa se, tangak, madag, muntan, ndi rekakatalgim, karamit el Formula 5, akno, sabega, monokle rogo si. Ah, imutol lok, silubi, wa se, na al salgets. Hmm, mal, le, blataklwa se, al bol, asumun mosu, ul ngutal droal, ngariyel te al ra, arongalgrbelaw, si, masu, el mo pilot, eh, lemension ra, I United, el wa se, tofera, in the next few years, ala, training, mora, 5,000, besel mo pilot, eti aigid l area, hmm, ul mesel segi del opportunity, wa se, te lel, se, el guk, mo, mengadu ura, arongalgrbelaw, el mo, hopefully, to mo, ra, eti aigid industry, maluven eti aigid profession. Mklabulgula, dudul wa se, ndi al getz, len ngariya adal guk, gora, meriil, position, emer goe, mo getz, etiri, gora, hasier. Tidudu lisem, sula.
Sula Senator Cuarte. Digangod, ah, al sumen digangod, et tigel roguil gonger tial Standing Committee Report 11 dash story, giril la, alibu, ldu oi. Om tok, namai. Floor Leader.
President, kisem na adapt tial report, tial resolution. Ma, ul ngite, bolsebe del guk, revektel mosel resolution kalender. Et tiyanga adaplesingi, adaptson, ma dabor adaptson, eh, kela motion, el, el adapt tia aigid Standing Am, ah, Senate Resolution 11 dash 28.
Si da motion namdung esegna, tigel roguil gongendu oi. Om tok, namai. Floor Leader.
Segi de, Mr. President, ma, ah, kliya motion, ma dadastra, ah, Senate Resolution 11 dash 28.
Klera, brosabalo. Short recess. Ra, Mr. Lubu Litler, ah, eleven yes, ede ano. Short recess. Dudonges session, ngidel mora order. Floor Leader.
President, kadamla, rogi ra resolution kalender. Ang, kadamal molme, ndiga ngara item 13, ma 14. Eda mor sel 15, nganiya tablol, miscellaneous communication, ma dano tra, miscellaneous communication 11 dash, ah, 120, tiya amla ra Mr. Uur, Mergau Senate, Senate President, al giril, ah, Senate Bill number 11 dash 15, tiya msaadra sel, togra comprehensive reform, ah, mother, eh, modernization tax, tax code. Hmm, tok talil communication, bo dano teri. Nde rekam, dano tra miscellaneous communication 11 dash 121, el mera, Ms. Timaro, el mergal Senate President, al guk, wa isel gidigiril, ah, COFA Trust Investment Report, ra for, ah, ah, quarter ending, ending March 31, 2021. Aigida tablol, maklotutel, communication, ler gidel al session. Eh, de, po diul mora, senexa item, miscellaneous business.
Senator Isal. Mr. President, at se chairman na committee, gara ngiti, eh, akmubalanga sulim, beda se, labais President of Senate, lasulela floor leader. Ergid, Senator Aldabel, Senator Mayur, sile, marbetel delegates, are supported tir, Senator, are supported tir, el mosel bir, ra, organization. At se chairman na committee, gara, akmulum, lomrang, wa se, lela na committee, gara, jiti, eh, ulmes, ekal tijada, aigil togoi mildu, going forward, mosabe del guk, individually, eh, as, as a group, kada mokdor, President, aigil aigid, kla important togoi mildu tial blay, world, a can situation going forward, ogi wa la, maluven executive order, President, and what have you. Sula. Sula Senator Isal, Maria Angud. Floor Leader.
President, anga, digiam, miscellaneous, mal, namo, koso, ma, adal, am, nambe, ka energy theme, do, oh, lomolma mora announcement, na ka, nganiya announcement.
Senator Songo.
President, ah, committee gara tourism, environment, and maritime, amor ngia, public hearing ra, sel Senate Bill 11 dash 20, tia sele Fishery Development Fund, el mori ngi ra, 2PM ra, asel, sel light office, gidel ngara, orior. Ah, Monday, el May 3rd. Sula, Mr. President.
Senator Inavo.
Ah, Mr. President, ah, committee, ah, Caravace and Means, ah, mo, continue ra public hearing ra, sel Senate Bill 11 dash 15, ra Friday, obengela Chamber of Commerce, ah, ten oklara tutau, ra, sel, obi se gidel, ngar orior. Ah, akti al, masa sel miscam 11 dash 120, tiya, comment, trigir tial bill, ma, ul ngita, Senator, sama dada, tongulolela file agid, mesel bo dada consider tial bill, eti regal, Thomas, aigal, el concern ra, ah, Mr. George Uur. Eh, Mr. President, ah, committee, ah, Wayzen Means, ati regal, eh, momru ra, public hearing at tial, Senate Bill 11 dash 15, sel general public hearing al Moravway, ra Monday, ra ten oklara tutau, ma Tuesday, ra five oklara kabsangir. Aigal, kakarusal time, ang mo, sabedel masteri ra, te alira roguil, adal guk, sugumutourior, en sabiral merakabsangerat Tuesday, asugumang guk, digal, luriore, sabiral meramandera, ten oklara tutawi, kada trial, spread, aigal hiring argid, mang mo, sabedel Maya Oldasuela, arbeqal adra, way, nganiya, ah, concern, ati regirat tial Senate Bill 11 dash 15. Ma, aigid announcement, ah, Wayzen Means, eh, sula eh, Mr. President.
Sula eh Senator Inavo. Digangod, floor leader.
President, abradong simre, edik, dik, gaokat kelgerel sel, el joint session, sel first, el joint session, ngidre, al ngangal urior, truklok. At se, mo, sat, el President, ma, mo, deliberasora, ndingita arveka, ada, atar, gida, island formal, ma, damele gora, ah, opaila aigid, island formal, uniform agi. Eh, bo se, adal, eh, morsel adjournment, maqmu, ma dha, omalit tial blay, subject to call of the chair.
Si da motion en namadung, tigel roguil gongendu oi.
Oi.
Om tok.